Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to this meeting of the Tacoma Public School Board of Directors for a business meeting tonight on June 8th, 2023. And would everyone like to please rise and join me for the flag slip?
Flag allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. We acknowledge, this acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. General Counsel Ben Row, would you please call the roll?
Yes. President Baumbright?
Here.
Vice President Shorjer?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
Director McElroy?
Here.
And I think Director Leon on the way?
Yep.
We have a call?
And what about, and do we have any student reps in the room?
I don't believe this evening that we do.
Okay.
I think Amanda's, it was last, meeting was her last.
You never know. They might just show up because they love being here so much.
True, true. Yeah.
Okay.
Fact.
Thank you, General Counsel. I would like to have a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please.
I move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone looking at you have any comments, questions, or additions to the agenda? Hearing none? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We have an agenda. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. 6.1, state holidays and civic observances. And I will turn this back over to General Counsel Ben Row for a discussion of this point.
Yes, we have one civic observance for this meeting in June and one state holiday. So item 6.1A LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Under RCW 43.114.070, the legislature declares that June of each year will be known in Washington State as LGBTQ Pride Month with the stated purpose of celebrating and recognizing contributions made to the state of Washington by LGBTQ people in the arts, science, commerce, and education. The RCW also encourages educational institutions, public entities, and private organizations to designate time for appropriate activities in commemoration of the lives, history, achievements, and contributions of LGBTQ people. Our second item, 6.1B, is Juneteenth. Under RCW 1.16.050, the legislature declares that the 19th day of June shall be recognized as Juneteenth, a holiday which celebrates the emancipation of those who have been enslaved in the United States. On Juneteenth, the legislature encourages that this be a day to revisit our shared solidarity and commitment to anti-racism, to educate ourselves about the history of enslavement in the United States, and to continue having conversations that uplift every Washingtonian. So this year, Juneteenth falls on a Monday. So for students and families listening, there will be no school on Monday, June 19th, and school and district offices will be closed.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments from the dials? I need to do this. Okay. So moving on, oh, before we move on, I would like to say that you might notice that Superintendent Garcia is not with us this evening, and we have our illustrious Deputy Superintendent Lisa Nolan here in his stead. The reason Dr. Garcia is not here is a very noble one, and we're all very proud of him. Today, this morning, he testified before the U.S. Senate Committee on Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions, which is probably the biggest policy committee in the Senate, on behalf of student social, emotional well-being, mental health. And he was on a panel, he was the only superintendent from the entire nation there today, testifying and talking about the impact social, emotional health and well-being have on our students and some of the tricks of the trade we're using here in Tacoma that seem to be working. So he did really well and answered some tough questions and answers and gave a great presentation. So we are all very, very proud of our superintendent for representing Tacoma well. So that's why he's not here this evening. So item 6.2, recognition of students admitted to PLU as part of the TPS PLU Degrees of Change partnership. And I see our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Zeke Edmonds is here to introduce this item.
Yes, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors recognize the district's first members of the SEED Teacher Apprenticeship Program. And to give you more on that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Pat Irwin, Director of Educator Pathways.
Good evening, Board, Board President, Dr. Nolan, and everybody here. My name is Patrick Irwin, Director of Educator Pathways. And I really should come to more board meetings because I only come giving you good news every time I come here. And this is good news. This is, I'm going to introduce the idea behind the SEED Teacher Partnership. This is a relationship we have with Pacific Lutheran University. In just a moment, President Belton will come up and speak. And it's a partnership with Degrees of Change. And the incoming CEO, Marquise Dixon, will come up and speak as well. And then I'll introduce all the students to you. But really, before we get started, I want to give credit to Dr. Garcia because this was his idea. He called me last year, said, hey, I want you to come downtown. I've got this idea. And this was the idea that he had in mind. And we can get into the particulars or the details. You've got information in the board report, but the bottom line is we need to have a dedicated teacher pipeline of sending students to us so they can become teachers. And who better to teach our kids than our current students? So we started recruiting in about January of this year, and it was a little tough initially just because a lot of students already had their plans in place. They wanted to go to UW, Wazoo, wherever. And we ended up with 16 elite excellent candidates. We'll introduce some to you shortly. But it was a, it was a great journey. And in the coming years, our plan is to have 20 students every year going through PLU through the SEED Partnership. And then in the course of four or five years, we'll start to reap the benefits of having these students come back to us to become teachers in Tacoma Public Schools. Now, as we say, we're better together. And in the audience tonight, you have the students, you have their families, we have representatives from PLU, Degrees of Change, we have representatives from our schools, that is, teachers who nominated these folks. And also, I want to give special recognition to Lisa Eganis, who's over on the wall there. If she wants to wave to everybody. And she started a program called Teach 253 at Lincoln High School, which is a pre-teaching program that was part of the inspiration for this. And then Siobanda Simmons-Smith, Siobanda's in the back, who is her cohort at Mount Oklahoma. So at this time, I'm going to introduce President Belton. Following him will be Marquise Dixon. Then I'll come back up. I'll introduce the students. We'll have them come up here, shake your hands, and pose for a picture. Thank you.
Evening, Board members, community members. Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for sending such wonderful students to PLU. We are about to welcome one of the largest classes we have in the last decade. And I'm happy to share that we have set a record for the number of students coming to PLU from the Tacoma School District and that we are, there are none, none, that we are more proud of than the 16 future teachers coming from various Tacoma schools to PLU to become teachers. It will be our distinct honor to take care of these 16 students for the next four years and to happily send them back to Tacoma from beautiful Parkland in four years to become teachers in this amazing school district. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and community members. My name is Marquise Dixon. I come to you wearing two hats this evening. I come to you as an employee of Degrees of Change, where we've been investing in Tacoma Public Schools students for the past 21 years. Have we seen close to 80 students receive full tuition, full need scholarships to our partner colleges? I come to you again as a father of three amazing young children, who, a middle child who wants to be a future educator. So if you walk into the Dixon household, you'll walk in, you'll see our daughter teaching her stuffies. And it's because of the commitment and the passion that teachers have instilled with her. Our child is very shy, reserved, but her teachers have been able to influence her and build that belief that she can be anything she wants to be. And it's because of teachers. So if you ask her what she wants to be when she grows up, she says she wants to be a teacher. So I'm thankful not only to Pacific Lutheran University, who we partner with for the past 16 years, and they've had over 110 access scholars on our campuses. I also want to say thank you to our SEED Teacher Scholars for accepting this call because my children will have the opportunity to be able to see someone that looks like them leading them in a classroom. So thank you for your time, and we're grateful for our partnership with TPS, Pacific Lutheran University. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to announce the students who are the recipients of the SEED Scholarship. And they, we have 13 of them here, so I will call them up and I'll name their school. So we have Jocelyn Alanis, who is from Mount Oklahoma High School. Come on up, Jocelyn. Talia Kariaga Kaliga from Lincoln High School. Come on up. Coleman Fleetwood, also from Lincoln High School. Come on up, Coleman. Elizabeth Garcia Tapale from Lincoln High School. Lillian Garabey from Lincoln High School. Kyla M., also from Lincoln High School. Emma Nance from Tacoma Online. Rebecca Prieto, also from Lincoln High School. Amy Stevens from IDEA. Delita Taalili from Mount Oklahoma High School. Batima Yanas-Prieto from Lincoln High School. Atiya Yeager from SAMMY. And Crystal Zakapu from Lincoln High School. So at this time, I'd like them to come up and kind of do the circle and shake your hands, and then afterwards, when you finish, stay on stage so we can have the group photo. Make sure you listen to Board Member McElroy. She's got this all figured out, all the time. And just to recognize, we also, Jasmine de Santiago from Mount Oklahoma will be joining us in this program, Maya Folsom from SAMMY, and Karina Lopez Pacheco from Lincoln High School. They could not be here tonight, but those are three others who will be here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pat, for your hard work in this new project. We appreciate it. And, all right, and thank you to PLU and Degrees of Change for partnering with us on this experimental project. And we really appreciate all of you and working so diligently to help us create a pathway for these youth to become teachers and return to Tacoma Public Schools and give back. We appreciate that. All right. Item number seven, Superintendent Report, 7.1, a budget update. And I see our CEO, Roslyn Medina. What CFO, CFO? It's been a long day already. Coming to the podium, so.
Well, good evening. Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to give you a real brief overview of some things going on in the budget as well as a financial update of where we're at right now. We actually had hoped to be just a little bit further along tonight, but we are working our tails off. The poor budget team has been really putting in the midnight hours, burning the midnight hours, trying to get these things put together, and we just weren't able to make it there tonight. So instead of bringing you data that we know is going to change significantly, we held off a little bit. However, I will say that we have plenty of other information to share with you and to give you kind of a taste of what's coming in our budget and that we'll be bringing you a presentation a little bit later on in the month to get you where we're going to be at in balanced, in our balanced budget. For our financial update, this is as of February. It's actually two, two components. There's one in February, there's one in April. We wanted to give you an update on where we're at in our current year. This is a 2223 impact. And so we've talked a number of times over the last several months about how we ended last year a little bit lower in our fund balance than we anticipated that we might. Some of that was a timing issue. Some of that is just trying to understand where we were at the time of, with ESAR dollars, and we were coming out of the pandemic still. And so it's a little more difficult to estimate where we're going to end those years. So we came in a little lower when we started the beginning of this year. Our revenues are right now being projected at $527.6 million roughly, and that's about $42.6 million lower than what we had budgeted. Part of that is capacity, where we budget to receive additional revenues in as well as ESAR funds. We weren't anticipating that we would get the ESAR funds to the, to the level that we budgeted. And so it's not unusual or unexpected, but at this point, that's where we're at in our revenues. And our expenditure projections are at $552.6 million. And you'll see there's a deficit between those. We had anticipated even in the budget that we would be using fund balance reserves to help balance us. And we're seeing that that is coming to fruition. We are using those resources in our projections. What we saw in February is that our fund balance would be down to about $19.3 million or about $10.5 million lower than what we thought it might end in that, in that, from our projection, excuse me, from projection to budget. But where we're at right now in April is closer to 23 million. So we've closed that gap just a little bit. This, this is one of those years where we knew we were going to be really close on our budget and our fund balance, and we had budgeted our fund balance down to the 5% reserve amount. Where it stands right now with our projection, we're going to be below that 5% reserve. Now, we don't want to be in that space. That's not what our anticipation is, and that's not what the policy requires for us. However, it's kind of like trying to land an elephant blindfolded on a peanut. I mean, this is really very challenging, difficult work. There are 200 people that work in managing our budgets. The revenues change. One expenditure can throw us off in our projections. And so if we have a large, if we have a large expenditure that comes in last minute and we weren't anticipating that would come in, it could throw off our projections. And so what we've done is worked through some mitigation strategies. We're scrutinizing the way that we're hiring for positions. We're pulling back on some of the discretionary resources that people have access to, that budget managers have access to, to try to control and shift that projection for the year end. And, and those are typical budget strategies that we've used in past years as well. Our anticipation is that we'll see the fruits of those labors in the next projection or so, and that we still have an opportunity to help us mitigate any of these, any, where we're at in our fund balance reserve. But what you see here is that in February, we were projecting ourselves to be at 3.7 million. Right now, we're projecting ourselves at the end of April to be at 4.4%. And so we, we should be getting some updated numbers here in the next two weeks and get you a revision back on where, where we're going and what that looks like. But I do expect that with some of the mitigation strategies that we are employing currently, that we'll see that number continue to grow, to the point where it's possible that when we're done, we even have a fund balance reserve that's closer to 6%, 6.5%. It really could swing that much, just depending. The importance of fund balance, and this is probably more for the public than for you because you've heard this so many times from me, you could probably present this slide yourself, but the reserve requirements by policy are 5%. We keep those reserves on hand for emergencies, to help us with our bond ratings, and in case of an extraordinary event, so that we can make payrolls in a situation where, you know, there's an emergency, an earthquake or something like that, or you don't have access to your bank accounts on a regular basis, or revenues aren't coming in from the state because there's something wrong with the state at the state level. We try to set our internal goal between 5% and 8%. Clearly, we're not quite there right now, and so that's part of the mitigation that we're working towards. As we work towards finalizing our budget, this is our, our large budget year. This was also the large budget cycle for the legislature, state legislature. They went a little longer, we go a little later. We do our bigger process where we run the budgeting by priorities, where we ask people to submit proposals to us, and then we make determinations about which of those proposals we will fund. In, in order to help us prepare for that work, you have provided us with these guiding principles. And these guiding principles have been what the cabinet has used to make decisions about what positions to eliminate, what adjustments to make in our budget, what improvements to make in our continuous improvements efforts. And those are pretty standard practices. I would say despite the fact that we have announced a $10 million shortfall, we are doing a pretty typical business practice in the way that we manage the budget. The cabinet is getting together on regular intervals and going out and seeking suggestions on what we think we might be able to change, shift, adjust, add, modify, and then implementing those as we process through each of those items. From our enrollment perspective for next year, we're going to be down about 226, according to our demographer, 226 student FTE. The primary area that we will be losing enrollment will be in the middle school level, about 200, I have the number right here, let me not guess, 242 students in the middle school level. And we'll be down 13 at the high school level, but we'll be up 29 at the elementary, according to our projections. So we'll be watching those projections very closely come October, when we do our first real official count, to see if that will have an impact on our revenues for next year as well. As I said, this was the larger legislative cycle year, and some of the biggest changes that we are seeing are, Special Education got quite a bump, many, many millions of dollars. It's very exciting to have those resources available to us. And we will be employing those resources primarily within the Special Education Program. They did adjust the multiplier. We've talked about this a little bit in the past. They adjusted the multiplier and they adjusted the cap, which gives us two components that they're monkeying around with on the calculation methodology, which is a great news for us because we'll get those additional resources. But it also puts us in a position where it will change the way our safety net is calculated. And so while we are gaining some resources over here, it will change some of the resources that we have access to over here. So that was a new wrinkle for us that we found as we were processing through all of these adjustments. And then we have some prototypical allocation enhancements. They had promised two years ago to make some improvements related to physical, social, and emotional supports. And this was the last year that they made, that they finished making those improvements. So we got some resources for that. And then on the MSOC, we went up $45 on our MSOC. So MSOC is material supplies and operating costs. That's just a generic overhead allocation that they provide to us from the state. On the wages and benefit increases from the state legislature perspective, we did receive a 3.7% cost of living adjustment called the implicit price deflator. And that 3.7%, we receive revenue for 3.7% of the people, or excuse me, 3.7% for the people who the state funds. But all of the people that we fund through our levy or in excess of what the state provides funding for, we have to also pay that 3.7%. And we do not receive any resources from the state in order to do that. And so what that means is we have to make room in the budget, carve out expenses, and set those aside so that we can make increases to the salaries and benefits of those staff which are not funded by the state. So that helps to contribute to a deficit that we've expressed earlier. On the SEB benefits, so SEB is our School Employee Benefit Board, that is our health benefits. That increase is also going to have the same impact as the implicit price deflator. The SEB benefits are our monthly contribution that we pay on behalf of each of our employees for their, for their health benefits. We only get the portion from the state in revenue that they actually fund staff for, and the remainder of those staff that we fund, we have to pick up the cost of those staff's health benefits increases. And then on the retirement, we had talked earlier about how, under the Senate's version, they gave us this really preferential savings, and we thought, oh, that's really great. And we maybe said, that seems a little strange. We didn't think we would actually get something like that. But on the House side, they didn't have any improvements. It turns out, they figured out where their error was, and they reduced the revenue down, and they reduced the expenditure down. So for us, it's pretty much a wash, but there was a modification to that, and I just wanted to circle back with you on that. And then as far as budget adjustments go, we have, we have annual maintenance level cost increases and changes every year. This is nothing overly new or exciting. I think probably the most remarkable piece will be that their ESAR funds are winding down. So this 2324 cycle will be our last cycle with the federal stabilization funds called ESAR. Those resources will probably be around $10 million that we'll end up budgeting for this next year. And anything that we don't spend by September of 2024 will be reverted back to the federal government. So enrollment fluctuations are another revenue impact. And then, of course, state enhancements will be an increase for us for those resources that we're getting in, that we didn't have in the budget before. We have standard cost increases every year. People move up the salary schedule. We call that incrementing or step increments. We have cost and inflationary increases. Gasoline keeps going up. Utilities, insurance costs keep going up. And so we have to build a budget room for all of those expenses as well. And then, of course, we bargain 11 different groups. So we have salary increases that have been negotiated with each of those groups that we have to make room for in the budget as well. And then a new item that's kind of exciting is our transitional kindergarten plan. We will be expanding our traditional, or excuse me, our transitional kindergarten programming. I think we will receive a few more slots available for preschool, so that's exciting. So with that, I'll say that we will have a few components of budget coming up. June 22nd, I will not be here, but Kristen Bell will be, and she's our budget director. She'll present you with our balanced budget. With any luck, we should be able to get there by then. At the end of June, we'll also do some budget video launching and release the budget calculator with the 2324 budget information included within it, give people an opportunity to engage with the budget, understand a little more about the changes and the impacts of what we've got going on in that budget. And then we'll have a formal July 13th hearing. I will be back for that. And then August 24th is our planned adoption for the budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Director Keating.
I was wondering if on, let's see, Slide 6, when talking about, just for the, those who are listening, for the special education increases, if you could just explain what it, what the cap means? And also, like, the money that has been allocated or increased for sped, that special education funding, that that's not just for the school district that, and just touch on that, that it's a statewide increase?
Okay, so on the cap, we only receive funding up to a certain percentage of students in our whole population. And that, that percent went from 13.5% of our population. We could get funded up to that if we have students identified. So if we have 12% of our students identified as special education, we get one of our funding components funded up to that point. Now that they moved it up to 15, if, as long as we're in excess of 15, we'll get that full 15% of our population included in that calculation. So they've expanded the number of people with which they will provide us with resources for. I don't think I understood the second part of your question.
Because they didn't say it. That's exactly what.
Thank you.
But just in time, and I feel like, I think you touched on it last time when you presented us, but there was a significant amount of investment by the legislature in special education funding, but not all of that goes to Tacoma Public Schools, like that, that it, that the money that's been allocated is for, across the state. And maybe I'm still not asking my question as clear as I hope.
So then, I mean, are we talking about the multiplier specifically, or are we talking about safety net?
No, 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 just the fund, the, the amount of funding, like, the, like, I think that there was, I, I feel like you, we did touch on this a little bit last time, last time you were presenting to us, but that there was maybe this, to clarify, that the amount of money that has been allocated for the increase in special education funding is, is across the state. It wasn't specific to Tacoma Public Schools.
So we'll receive about, in total, $9 million roughly of new special education funding within the Tacoma School District. I think statewide, we, they received an allocation of $300 million roughly.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, 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 totally. Thank you.
Okay, wait. I remember something, too. So, and then also, Dr. Garcia was there when we talked about it last time, is that the cap is just the amount the state's willing to fund, but just also for the public, we have more students than what we are actually being funded for. So we're getting, we're getting an increase, which is good, so we can serve more, but we even have more students than that identified, that we continue to serve and meet IEP goals, even though we are not being funded through this thing, right?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. There we go.
And while we're on this slide, just another point for the public, because I think it's, you know, there are a lot of acronyms that we've been throwing around. And I think one of the things to just clarify what I believe Roslyn was saying about why we have the impressive, the implicit price inflator, deflator, you know, that 3.7%. When you say it's only for those that are funded by the state, and people are going thinking, well, what else could they be funded by? So we have other programs that are like federal programs that are come, that have come down, or ones that are funded by come down, or ones that are funded by, you know, local, local resources, levy or other resources, and they're not considered state funded. So we don't want to treat our own employees differently, so we are giving all of our employees across the board this 3.7%, but we only are getting enough money from the state to cover the state-funded employees. And so that's.
Yes, thank you.
And it's the same thing for the, for the SEB and the retirement. So it's, it's, we don't pick and choose among our, of our staff by who they are funded by, their staff, and they're treated evenly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rosalind, and we will look forward to seeing Kristin next board meeting. All right, we have to get back to the, I can't do that right, I'll just do it off here. All right, so we are going on to item number 7.2, the McCarver Elementary renaming process update.
Madam President, and members of the board, I am happy to report to you that there's an update on the McCarver renaming proposal. And behind me, to my left, are many members of the committee here this evening, but to share the update and to share the information related to the proposal that they shared with Superintendent Garcia, Stephanie Wright, our principal at McCarver Elementary, will come up, and Mu Knowles, who is not only a committee member, but an alumni of McCarver Elementary.
Good evening, Deputy Superintendent Nolan, President Baum Bright, and members of the board. As Principal of McCarver Elementary School, I proudly stand here with McCarver alumni Mu Knowles, on behalf of the McCarver Renaming Committee, to bring forward a proposal for McCarver School name change. Tonight, we would like to share our process that has led to our recommendation and proposal. Board Policy 6970 was initiated last fall, when a community member reached out to the superintendent, raising concerns about McCarver Elementary School being named after Morton Matthew McCarver, a known racist. The community member asked the superintendent to consider a school name change. Per Policy 6970, as Principal of McCarver Elementary School, I was advised to establish a committee, gather the voice of our stakeholders, and submit the findings, summarizing the support or opposition to the proposed change. After a pre-committee phase of researching, consulting with schools that have undergone the process, and communicating with staff, a committee was established. The School Name Change Committee consists of 18 members, representing staff, students, parents, alumni, and community members. The committee gathered eight times, starting in February, with our last meeting concluding in May. The committee began by setting our purpose and committing to a fair and equitable process in eliciting community voice in this decision. Members of the committee dedicated time to providing historical context and designing a community survey. We discussed opportunities for outreach to ensure we gathered all the voices from our McCarver and Hilltop community. We wanted to provide more information to our community by hosting a community information event, which allowed our community to learn more about the historical context to this proposal, while also giving alumni an opportunity to revisit a remodeled school, and to eliminate any barriers in completing an electronic survey, as we had a paper pencil survey at the event. During meetings, the committee viewed the status of the survey results to see what audience we were reaching. The community members also created a student video for the current McCarver students that included historical background and proposal information. A survey was then administered to all McCarver students. When the survey closed, it was open just about four weeks, the committee analyzed the survey results. The committee used the results to make this recommendation and proposal that went to the board, actually in June, not in May, as we did extend our timeline due to an additional I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge the work of our committee, and thank them for their dedication, intentionality, and care they took in this process. So if you were part of our committee, can you please stand for acknowledgement?
My turn. Good evening, this is my first time in this building. My name is, at least I think so, my name is Mu Knowles, they/them pronouns, born and raised in the historically black Hilltop neighborhood, and I'm here tonight to just tell you a little bit about my role and the committee's role, and also the outreach we were able to do. So I, before I do that, I just want to give a little background of myself. I am a McCarver alumni, and I was a part of the Xenial Lenick Park Project. Raise your hand if you know anything about the Xenial Lenick Park Project, maybe you know, maybe you remember her story, right? I was actually in fourth grade when the event happened, and tragedy struck our community. And our goal as a community at that time, that was back in like 2008-ish, Obama was president, and we continued to build community, and that was kind of a key moment in my life in order to build my leadership skills. I was a key stakeholder, I spoke in front of the Senate Budget Committee, City Council, the list goes on, and this was just as a 10-year-old, right? So we got this experience to build this project together, and that has shaped my journey so far in my life. And I just thought that was an important aspect of this, because it's kind of a full-circle moment for me, especially being on this committee, because I had the honor of playing the role as a facilitator. I am an experienced facilitator, I might be young, but I do have experience, I work in the community a lot. So my main goal was to make sure community members that were on this board, which it was a diverse room of individuals, that they were included and that their voices were valued throughout this process. What I like to call it is a participatory process. So we come from different backgrounds, we have varying kind of abilities and gifts to bring to the table, right? And we also had different levels of capacity, as you all know, you're on a board, so coming to a committee meeting in the evening time is not easy. We have parents, we have students who are here, we have, you know, educators and people who have varying needs in order to be able to participate, varying responsibilities. So we really had the opportunity to balance each other out, and really harness our collective power together. In our work as a committee, I would say, in my experience facilitating this space, we did our due diligence in order to explore the diff, the different complexities that come with renaming a school, especially with someone like Morton McCarver, Morton Matthew McCarver, someone who was outwardly anti-black, and his anti-black racism actually led to legislation changing, and it impacted the black community across the United States, but in particular on the West Coast. And our goal as a, as a committee was to really build consensus, and through that consensus building, we really made sure to utilize the community's voice, and the survey results, and all the community gatherings that we were able to have, we used those as our guiding compass in our decision-making. I also had the opportunity, Stephanie spoke of the community engagement night that we had, I had the opportunity to emcee that, and we seen familiar faces, faces we didn't know that were a part of the McCarver community, and we really got the chance to have more of a personable experience, right? And I think that's really important when you think of community engagement, and the most effective ways to really reach community in these kinds of moments, where the decision is really important. So we, I believe we were really able to truly harness the community's voice, and really promote the survey in a way that allowed us to see the decision we needed to make, and that decision was built upon the voice of the community. So thank you, I'll pass it to Stephanie, unless you want me to say something else. But that, that's what I came prepared to share, is just that we were really focused on centering community, and growing up in the Hilltop, that's really important to me, because it doesn't happen often.
Thank you, Mu. As Mu mentioned, outreach was really important for us. As the committee, we wanted to reach as much of our community as possible. In collaboration with the TPS Communications Department and the affiliations of our committee members, we used a variety of platforms to get our survey out. Communication went out through the global school community email and phone systems, family newsletters, social media, the News Tribune, and our community event. Our survey results, when asked when they, when asked whether they supported a name change, the survey results of our community survey showed 74% in support of a McCarver name change, and 26% opposed to a McCarver name change. This reflected 831 responses, including TPS staff, TPS students, 300 TPS parents, 160 alumni, and more than 160 community members. The survey results of our current students' survey showed 70% in support of a name change, and 30% opposed to a name change, which reflects a 198 responses. When asked about potential names for the name change, the community survey results showed that 53% of our community would like McCarver to be named after a person, and 74% wanted a local role model. The community, the committee used this data to create criteria for possible names. The criteria included being a person who embraced diversity and equity, someone with a direct connection and contribution to the Hilltop, Hilltop community, along with consideration of year and time of service in the community, and someone connected to education and/or dedicated to working within supporting BIPOC children. The community also had an opportunity to write in name suggestions. Two names were suggested multiple times. Tacoma resident and leader, Nettie Asbury, was identified 16 times through the survey, and Tacoma resident and leader, Dr. Edna Travis, was identified 71 times through the survey. The committee decided to take these two names into consideration, and time was spent to research and gather information about the two candidates, and a meeting was dedicated to share and align the findings with the criteria that was established by the committee based on the survey. The committee thoughtfully listened to and heard all sides of the strengths and considerations for each person before voting on the final recommendation. The committee then met one final time after the vote to continue further discussion and address any other thoughts or concerns before voting to move forward with a proposal to change McCarver Elementary School to Dr. Edna Travis Elementary School. Dr. Edna Travis overwhelmingly embodies each criterion established by the committee. She was a humanitarian advocate and mother, whose daughters attended McCarver Elementary as children. She was one of the first black women pastors in Tacoma, founding the New Covenant Church on the corner of 23rd and MLK, just a block from McCarver. Dr. Edna Travis championed many causes during her life of 90 years, including opening a feeding program which served many families, served many Hilltop individuals and families experiencing food and housing insecurity five days a week. Dr. Travis was known to be a constant source of hope, courage, and comfort to many in her role as a community leader, and her children and grandchildren continue her legacy through their community organizing and service, mutual aid and outreach efforts, and advocacy for the empowerment of young black and brown students, including those who tend McCarver today. Dr. Travis touched many corners of Tacoma, leaving many residents of Hilltop with personal stories of their connection to her beautiful spirit. Dr. Travis spoke to power, built community, opened safe transitional housing, and carved a space in the neighborhood that welcomed all who sought a place to be seen, acknowledged, and valued. Proposing this name gives Tacoma Public Schools a great opportunity to honor the life and legacy, as well as the seeds of equity planted by Dr. Edna Travis. Again, on behalf of the McCarver Name Change Committee, we thank the board for your time and consideration of this proposal.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the committee? I just want to thank everyone on the committee, all of you that are here today, and those that weren't able to show up. I know how much work this is. Believe it or not, it was, in the past 20 years, I think there have been two name, named, new schools named, Willie Stewart Academy and Tacoma Online. And then, so it's, it's a really unusual, and all of a sudden, since we've been on the board, several of us, it's, we've done, this will be the third name change. So it's like, out of nowhere, this has been really a lot of work for you, not communities to do this, and for us as well, it's a wonderful experience. So thanks for all the hard work, and appreciate that. And what we're gonna, gonna do here is give the opportunity of each board member to hear what you've said, think about it, and at one of the next couple of board meetings, we will take this up for a vote. But we really appreciate all the work that you've put in, and, and, and the input from the community. I'd also like this, to take this time for those listening, to, if you have thoughts on this issue, to write to us at board@tacomak12.wa.us, and that'll give us an opportunity also to hear from, from others that might not have answered the survey. But anyway, we really appreciate you, and you are awesome representatives of the Hilltop region, and we're thrilled to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So now, up, item number eight, staff report to the board. Number 8.1, Strategic Benchmark Monitoring Report, Partnerships, Volunteers, and Organizations.
Yes, thank you, Director Scott Thomas, for sharing this evening. We look forward to the monitoring report.
All right. Good evening, Board of Directors, beloved community. My name is Amanda Scott Thomas, I'm the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and I come before you about twice a year to kind of update you on some key benchmarks for partnership. We have a plethora, but we highlight two a year that we come and report and let you know what we're, how we're doing. So we'll get started. Am I pointing in the wrong direction? Oh, here we go. Okay. Volunteers, all right. So as you know, and have been paying attention the last couple of years, the pandemic hit our volunteers, volunteers number, it numbers in a serious way. Of course, people weren't able to volunteer, and so it took us a little while to pick up the momentum for, of course, safety first, making sure that our families and students were safe, and there was incremental opening of buildings, and we are back on trend. I'm excited to say that we set a 10% goal, or an increase of 10% for the year, and we have exceeded that goal. We were, last year, we had 2,967 volunteers, where we stand out is about 5,000, 5,571, so it's an 88% increase versus the 10%, so woo-hoo, we're trending upward. Volunteers and families are back in buildings, back volunteering, our community partners have been excellent, and so we're really excited about meeting and exceeding that goal this year for volunteer numbers. As you know, historically, about 50% of the volunteers for an entire school year usually register, because we register them annually, they usually register in the first couple of months of school, so September and October is our biggest push for volunteers. But what we've been seeing since the pandemic is that we're having volunteers engage and register throughout the school year, and so we had our regular, normal, big bump in October and September, but we had another huge bump in March. So that's a time where there are a lot of field trips and a lot of different things going on, so we're seeing a little bit more consistency as far as register, registration with our volunteers happening throughout the years, not just the, the beginning of the year. So 41% of our volunteers registered in February and March and April of this year, and that's something new. And again, we surpassed our goal. Our next steps in, in terms of increasing volunteers and working on this benchmark, is that we're continuing to, now I have a really good support system within the office that's helping with us with automation and cleaning up some of our processes, so we're going to continue to keep the watch users updated, so that's a list of in our district who has access to volunteer information and able to run volunteers at to run volunteers at the school site. When we went through and did an inventory of that list, we had hundreds of people on that list. We were able to find out who was still active, who should have access to that list. So that was a great piece of work this year, so we've cleaned that up and will continue to manage that. We're continuing to work with the comms teams. They've been supporting us in volunteer engagement, getting the word out, making it easier for folks to volunteer. A lot of our processes have went online, though again, we do not have a centralized system, so people have to volunteer at a school. You have to go to a school and fill out the form. And so we get a centralized system. That's the way we do it, and we're tracking that from the partnership office. We'll continue to support buildings with family and community engagement events and activities. It's a great way to engage folks in volunteerism. They come to school, have a great time, participate in one of the family fun nights, the paint nights, and they're also asked to volunteer. So you'll see a continued increase in our number, and we're really hopeful. The next priority benchmark that we take a look at each year, I point to you and talk to you a little bit about our formal partnership. These are, when we say formal partnerships, and this is good for the public to know, the district has formal partnerships, and we define those as partners that are either entered into a contract or an MOU with the district. That doesn't mean that if you have heard of an organization that works with the school district but doesn't have a contract or an MOU, doesn't mean that they're not a partner. It just may mean that they're an informal partner, and they may be working with one of our formal partners or working in an informal way. But we do track, and what we keep in a database are our formal partners. And that formal partnership database is really district-wide, and our focus here is around expanded learning opportunities and working with community-based organizations to support students. So we track a number every year that defines or that looks at those particular organizations. As you can see, again, these partners for this year, our number was 61. The other thing that impacts this data is that our partners, we bring on new partners every year, but we have partners that their MOUs or contracts expire, and then we have some that are multi-year. So the number stays around in the 60s usually. So as you can see, we picked up from last year, we had 40 last year, we're back at 61 this year, and that's for those community-based organizations that support students, and those were the ones that were established the beginning of this school year, September 2022 to now, May 2023. So those are new partners that were established that fit that ELO, Community-Based Organizations Student Support Programs, 61 for the year, doing pretty good. You like to take a look every year about what partnership looks like throughout the district. We know that the Partnership Office is not the only department that establishes MOUs and contracts. They happen throughout the district. We do a chunk of those and work with a lot with community-based organizations, but that gives you kind of a visual to see how, out of the partnership pie, that's how it's split up across the district and who creates and establishes those partnerships throughout the district. Our key findings, again, I share that these, the data that I shared with you reflects new partnerships, or is the partnerships for this year. We've implemented, again, we're always trying to make things easier for our constituents and stakeholders and community-based organizations to partner with the district. We have an open-door policy, but it's not always easy for people to find a pathway to partnership and be directed in the right place. So we have implemented an online partnership intake form, so when somebody comes to the website, "How to Partner with Tacoma Public Schools," there's a link to say, yeah, this is who I am, this is how I would like to partner, and we're able to filter those applications or those intake forms to direct things to Green Trike if it's more of an ELO after-school program that fits Beyond the Bell, or if it's something that we would support or help to establish an MOU might service high school students. And we know Beyond the Bell and School Beyond is for middle and elementary school students. So there are lots of partnerships that come in, and we're kind of the liaison and filter those and support people in establishing those. We've established 10 extended or expanded learning opportunities this year through MOU and the ESER funding, so I'm really excited about what the ESER funding allowed us to do. Our department usually seeds out of our budget, a couple of community-based organizations, small community-based organization expanded learning opportunities. Because we got some ESER funding, I had some partners in the Pike that have already been delivering great services, and ESER was allowed to enhance some of those programs and expand, and then seed some new programs. So this year, we had Alpha 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 Sorority, they created a mil program at Stafford Elementary. We had Proyecto Mole, which is a mentoring organization for Latino youth and young adults. That's a longtime partner that has been doing good work without any funding from the district, so we were able to support some of that work. We had Rock, Paper, Scissors Foundation, and they did a social and emotional learning trafficking, sex trafficking prevention and mentoring program at our middle schools, a couple of our middle schools. We had Big Homie Ministries International, they did an after-school program for students to engage in anti-violence counseling and gang avoidance. That was something that was able to be seeded by ESER funding. We had Dr. Push Gaines, Push Inspirations. He was able to provide a social, emotional curriculum and character development program for middle school students through an after-school tutoring and mentoring program. We had Moneyverse, which was financial education done at elementary, middle, and high school, at the high school level for students. Build to Lead, an organization that's a community-based organization run by a person of color as well, offered social, emotional learning and leadership development workshop and activities for middle and high school students. We had El Camino, which is the multicultural center. They provided education and early intervention for students at risk of drug or substance abuse. And then Student Connections was a peer-to-peer tutoring counseling program. They had offered free academic support and consistent academic role models. This was created by two students, and we were able to support that. And then KidVantage, which was a formerly Eastside Baby Center, we were able to work with them to provide early learning supplies, basic needs for infants for some of our families. So those are some of the partnerships that were just established this year. Super proud of the work that we've done. We usually establish anywhere from four to six new expanded learning opportunities, but with the ESER and just with the community engagement, we were able to do 10 this year. So I'm happy to report on that. Next steps, we'll continue to focus on partnership around the district goals and benchmark data, so everything we do supports the strategic goals of the benchmark around family and community engagement and also partners supporting student success. Those are the strategies and benchmarks in the Partnership Office. We'll continue to develop the Partner Portal, a platform for partners to access data. That's still ongoing. It is a machine that we are working on, and with all databases and systems, it takes a while for things to really, you know, work like a well-oiled machine. We'll continue to work with the Contracts Office to refine and report on ELOs and student and family support partnership data. The reason this is interesting and key is because when we have so many people throughout the districts establishing formal partnerships, they don't always check the ELO box where they might be establishing an expanded learning opportunity. So we work with Dr. Garcia, we got our definition for expanded learning opportunities, so it's going to take a little bit of a learning curve for everybody to understand, hey, when I do this MOU or contract, this actually does qualify as an expanded learning opportunity, and that will be in our partnership data that we'll be able to report to you. Also, just to give you a heads up, myself and Victoria Keys from the Partnership Office are going to be presenting at a national conference in DC, or no, Atlanta this summer. It's the NWEA, which, that project that we got grant funding through the Gates Project, and we created those family engagement modules, they invited us to come and present about our process and about the modules. So we'll be doing that at the end of the month, so we're excited to share that good work. Partnership is working to support, again, the citywide summer late nights, and continuing to engage the faith and social service provider community this summer. We do have a meeting with some of the folks that we met with during the school year to brainstorm and strategize and get a head start on this upcoming school year. And so those are our next steps. I keep going backwards. That was it. But while I have the microphone, I wanted to also talk about a work or a partnership and some community work that we've been doing. So as it was acknowledged earlier this month, it's Juneteenth, June 19th, we'll be celebrating Juneteenth in our state and in our country. The district has, we'll have an HR table at a Juneteenth event that's taking place at Stewart Heights Park. It's called the Juneteenth Celebration: Road to Economic Freedom. It's an all-day event, we'll have an HR table out there, we'll be in community. But I did want to hype up and make sure everybody knows and was able to come out. We're having our first-ever Miss Juneteenth Scholarship Pageant and Program. So we actually have seven candidates. Five of those candidates are TPS students. We opened it up around the county, and we got five TPS students to participate. We're super excited. The first-place winner will win a $1,000 scholarship. The second-place winner, I think it's a $700 scholarship, and then, or it's the first runner-up, and the second-place winner will win a $500 scholarship. But we've raised enough funds from community that have been buying ads from the program and then just gifts from colleagues and supportive community that every girl that participates will walk away with a scholarship. So please come out and join us if you want more information. It's juneteenthwa.com is where you'll find information about the event and the day. But we want to support our young people, and I just appreciate the district's support and always engaging in community events and just walking the talk. But we'll see you hopefully all on June the 19th to support our young ladies.
Thank you, Amanda. As always, a very full report. Does anybody on the dais have any questions?
Well, I have one quick question.
Yes.
Because I can't remember. I know you've told us before, but I think that's the theme of my questions tonight, is that when on slide seven.
Yes.
There's, and I feel like this was a data input, there was something about software, but that's why I can't remember. So in 2020 to 2021, there was that jump from the previous year from 127 to 366, and then clearly, so could you talk a little bit about why those numbers are the way they are?
Yeah, so user error. It was how we were counting the partnerships that Josh told me, like, get all the expanded learning opportunities, use the database, and we were counting on partnerships that actually were not, they were partnerships, but they were not expanded learning opportunities. So what you see right there is kind of a fluctuation in definition and defining the data that we were providing for you. And so it was just a larger number because it was, they were actual partnerships, but they weren't ELOs.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you as always, Amanda. Great job, and thank you to your expanding team.
Yes, thank you. A shout out to Victoria and Ren, I appreciate them.
And good luck next month when you're presenting.
All right, now I have flyers for anybody that wants to.
You can put them on the back table.
Okay.
People can get them on the way out. All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on to item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. The school board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tacoma.k12.wa.us. And please contact the board office in advance of a meeting for disability accommodations. So as many of you, or maybe all of you by now know, we have two ways to interact with the board. You can write, as we had just said, an email ahead of time, which we all read before the board meetings, and so that is the written comments, and you'll see on the agenda that there are some individuals that have done that. And then the first option, or the other option, is verbal comments, and I saw several people filling out blue cards tonight, so I'm going to turn this over to our general counsel, and he will read the, first tell you how to do this, and then he will read the names.
Yes, thank you. Public comments proceed under Board Policy 1430. Under 1430, the board president may interrupt and/or terminate comments when the speaker exceeds the time allotted or when comments are abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So we have 13 public comments today, so we'll ask to stick close to the time if that's possible to give everybody, everybody time to fit their comments in. So our first public comment is from Morgan Powell. Okay, stepped out, so we'll, we'll come back.
Come back.
My next comment is Ann Travis Barker. Also stepped in. All right.
We're a little slow.
Take your time. Oops.
She has a type problem. I have a knee problem.
You're a great pair. I love it.
We beg one and good pair. We are Dr. Travis's daughters. This is Beverly, I'm Ann. Dr. Travis had four girls. Our youngest sister Lisa passed just a little over a year ago, but they're here in spirit. Lisa was a school principal, won many awards. Our older sister Sharon passed seven months ago. She was a medical social worker. I retired from Bank of America as a full vice president. Beverly retired from DSHS as a social worker. The careers we had was because of our mother. She pressed education. We press education with our children. All of our children have degrees and are quite successful because of Dr. Travis. But I wanted you to understand why she, it would be an honor to name the school after her because she pressed for education. Many things people don't know about her. Our home was open to anybody in need. I can tell you right now, we never, ever lived alone. We often try to wonder, maybe this Christmas will be for us? No. Dr. Travis found somebody that needed to live with her and had to, we had to help. And then she started a situation where you had to take your best Christmas gift and give it to someone else. We had to learn that, and today, my great-grandchildren have to do the same thing. She went on not only opening up her home, she went on to open up the feeding program. We only got 54 sections. You want to say something? The thing I want you to remember, when Dr. Travis was at the Hilltop, that she stayed when many fled. There was gang violence, even at her house. There was time we would come to 1606. You couldn't get up there because there were so many gang members. But she would say to us, treat them nice. They're just lost right now. And we did, and they didn't do anything to us. Her nephew was murdered in the church's parking lot. His brain was blown out. And we thought, well, now we're going to leave. She said, absolutely not. And so I wanted you to understand that. We have a house called the Shalom House. Okay, I'm out of time, that's existing today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Right. Our next speaker is Renalda Grant.
Hi, I'm Renalda Grant. Hello, Tacoma School Board. I would like to speak on the renaming of McCarver Elementary. After I received my driver's license, I was driving Dr. Travis home down 19th Street here in Tacoma. I was in high school at Bellarmine and nearing the end of my high school career. She asked me, what are you going to study in college? And I told her I wanted to be a nurse, but quickly decided against that after I realized that field wasn't for me. As we approached 19th and Union, I looked over at KeyBank as we stopped at the stoplight, and she said to me, you should study computers. She said, one day, everything will be ran by computers, even cash registers. And I thought that was absolutely crazy, but being a 1970s baby, I learned to respect my my elders and just listen. And you have to realize this was like 1987 and now everything is what ran by computers. We knew why she said that. She had vision for the future. She said to me this famous statement that she told all of us, stay in school, get your education, because I don't want you to have to work hard. I don't want you to have to lift anything heavier than a pencil. Use your brain. Today, I can say her encouragement on that particular day was a vital force in my life. I graduated from Bellarmine. I went on to Tacoma Community College, graduated in 1991 with my associate's degree. I went on to Langston University in Oklahoma and graduated with my Bachelor of Science in Computer Science. And I've worked at City University to get my MBA. Why? Because of her influence in education. Today, I'm on the project right down the street for Hilltop Link Extension to make sure that we activate a link extension in our neighborhood. Why? Because she inspired me in education. Her impact on youth goes way beyond me. Hundreds of youth and adults, because she went on as an adult to get her education as well, has impacted this city. And today, I encourage you to rename McCarver Dr. Edna E. Travis School. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Malvo.
Hello, board and everyone else. I also would like to encourage you to rename McCarver after Dr. Travis. I was her neighbor for a couple of years. I've eaten at Thanksgiving at her house several times. I've heard her preach, even though church isn't really my thing. And I can't think of anyone who more embodies the spirit of education for everyone. Naming the school after her would be the most fitting thing I could think of. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Janelle Walter. Oh, okay. Shall we, let's circle back to Morgan Powell. All right, so those were the speakers who had signed up to speak on the McCarver naming project. We'll keep Morgan Powell and we'll keep Janelle Walter. We'll move on to the next topics. Okay, the next speaker we have is Joseph Gavin Morgan.
Props five time. Thank you. Good evening to the Tacoma Public Schools Board and to our community members here in the great state of Washington. My name is Gavin Morgan, he/him pronouns, and I've been joyfully teaching social studies in the district for 12 years, the last five of which have been at Baker Middle School, Baker Middle School, home of the Bulldogs. It was my pleasure to pilot this Educurious curriculum. My colleague Jill Pertrick had already introduced me to the DBQ's Document-Based Questioning, a strategy that strives to help teachers, help students read smartly and think and write clearly with educational documents and teacher development, so the jump to Educurious inquiry-based learning was smooth. Inquiry-based allows students to explore and ask questions of the world around them. There are some of the questions, these are some of the questions that our seventh graders explored this year. What decisions and whose stories define Washington State? How can dams in Washington serve the common good? How does innovation impact communities in Washington? And how are people in Washington connected to each other and to the rest of the world? In the poster summative and the first unit connected, you can see how students communicated their learning about how apples, aviation, salmon, and hydroelectric dams connected us to each other and to the rest of the world through the use of interactive community bulletin boards, and I will show those in a minute. Imagine how impressive how 30 of these interactive community bulletin boards would look hanging around Baker Middle School. Exploring these questions helped our seventh graders develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills. The Educurious curriculum also aligns to the standards and the C3 framework of college, career, and civic life. It is exciting watching my students learn history, geography, economics, and civics through inquiry-based research, evaluating primary and secondary resources, including multiple perspectives for evidence. It is rewarding to watch them collaborate, come to consensus, and then press forward with sharing what they've learned with the community as in the examples provided earlier. It was also extremely rewarding to watch my students learning about the Puyallup Tribe on whose ancestral lands we live. Not only does the Puyallup Tribal Inquiry work validate the many tribal students in my class, it also allows me to comply with the since-time immemorial requirements, which helps us increase racial equity in our schools. I would like to express my gratitude to Nicole Everett, the K-12 Social Studies Instructional Facilitator, who skillfully and gracefully facilitated this pilot, and to Ryan Whitlock and Robin Strong, my uber-dedicated Washington State History Partners in Crime, from Hilltop Heritage and Mason, respectively. We joyfully spent many hours together collaborating to tailor this curriculum to most effectively and efficiently meet our students' needs. And I have six seconds to show you.
Yeah, tie-toe electric dam posters. Fantastic. Interactive bulletin boards, QR codes. People walked by, could scan the codes, interact, write on them, ask the kids questions. It was fantastic. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan Whitlock.
Good evening to you, members of the Tacoma School Board and community. My name is Ryan Whitlock and I am currently the Washington State History Teacher at Hilltop Heritage Middle School. This is my third year teaching the course and I hope I'm given the opportunity to continue this journey next year. During the first year, I developed my own course content independently. The second year, I attempted a different pilot and this year I was able to pilot the Educurious curriculum. I am here today in support of the adoption of the Educurious Social Studies Curriculum for sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. As a project-based learning curriculum, students are encouraged to embrace inquiry. They are inspired to dig deeply into topics tailored to our state and region with a wealth of inclusive and varied resources, articles, videos, treaty transcripts, podcasts, infographics, et cetera. These resources build on the funds of background knowledge our students already possess, creating connections between self and community. Students are afforded opportunities for rigorous reading and writing throughout and multiple modes with which to demonstrate their understanding of the priority standards. From this curriculum, students have learned the major industries like aviation and agriculture that connect Washington State culturally and economically across the globe. How our state history is the product of the many voices of indigenous people, immigrants, and early settlers, and the importance of considering the common good when planning and developing major public infrastructure projects. Throughout this year, I have seen students find their own unique interests in the story of Washington State. For example, learning that Boeing is one of the largest producers of aircraft and other aviation and aerospace technology in the world inspired one student to design their own airplane. I also have no doubt that the majority of my students will remember that Washington produces over 12 billion apples each year. They were fascinated by apples. I have also seen students who would normally be content to turn in an essay and never talk to another soul, get up in front of their peers and discuss the key features of the Stevens Treaties. It was a student's line of questioning that taught me how immigrants were able to send money back to their families in China in the late 19th century. As an educator, I find value in giving students voice and options with rigorous content work. Educurious does this. I strongly recommend the adoption of the mid-level Educurious curriculum for social studies. Thank you for your time.
All right, our next speaker is Arthur Perkins-Klein.
All right, good evening, School Board and fans of the School Board. My name is Arthur Perkins-Klein. I'm a middle school social studies teacher. I teach sixth grade social studies, which is ancient history. And I'm also here in support of adopting the Educurious curriculum. I'm not sure how many of you remember your ancient history, social studies class, but getting students to buy into connections on how it actually applies to their life is almost impossible. And I thought that until I became a social studies teacher and then got to experience this curriculum. From the very first lesson that we did, I could tell that this curriculum was different. It was supposed to be a 30-minute lesson investigating the remains of some early humans and it turned into a three-day lesson of inquiry where the students tried to just find out exactly what happened to these people, which was fantastic. I wanted to stop it because we had other things to do, but I couldn't stop the inquiry. So this is a project-based learning curriculum, as my colleagues have just let you know. And the first thing we did was a project based on food instability in our community. And this is something that was very close to home to the students at Hilltop Heritage. Further on, we focused on issues that indigenous communities across the world face and we had similar posters to the ones that you just saw with the QR codes where students were able to research their own issues of choice and share that information with the school through posters. We also had a few debates about the best form of government. I had my face put on a poster that said dictatorship, so that was fun. And then most recently, we did debates on the most influential candidates of the Islamic Golden Age. The all-time winner was Fatima, who helped create the first university in the entire world. In fact, not helped, she created it and it is still around today. So, let's see, I got a minute left. Nice. So Educurious as a company has been incredibly involved in our work with us. And anytime we've had an issue or needed some adjustments, they have worked on that and gotten us the materials. And so partnering with this company, I think, would be an excellent choice for the students, the staff, and everyone in Tacoma Public Schools. Thank you.
Moving on to our next topic, our speaker is Kristen Hall.
High School Board Members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kristen Hall and I have a distressed TPS high school student. Over the past few weeks, rumors of significant impending changes to the grading system have been circulating. These rumors, which originate from teachers, include the following. One, TPS will be switching to what is known as standards-based grading. Two, the grading system will change to a numeric system ranging from 1 to 4. Three, teachers have stated it will be impossible to achieve a 4. Thus, A students will be downgraded to a B on the traditional GPA scale. And for this change will occur starting in the 2023-24 school year. These rumors appear to have a basis as the School Board is set to approve Revised Policy 2420, which provides broad authority to the district to implement significant grading changes. While the term standards-based grading is not used in the district's proposed policy, the bulleted items described in the policy mirror the principles of standard-based grading. The optics are bad. It appears as though TPS is quietly making policy changes to fundamentally change student evaluation without informing constituents. Why hasn't this policy change been communicated? In the agenda from your May 18th study session on grading, there's a presentation discussing TPS grading policy. The presentation includes the two opportunities that the parents have had to comment on grading, a listening session and a family survey. I took the survey. The questions did not suggest such a major shift in assessment practices was coming. The family survey had 2,469 responses. TPS serves about 28,000 students. Assuming a one parent to one student ratio, about 9% of TPS parents responded. In no way can the results of a survey with such a low response rate be considered valid as the number of respondents is too small to accurately represent the opinions of the TPS parent base. Yet these results are being used as evidence that families have been engaged and supportive. This is bad science and bad governance. Improvements in the existing system can surely be made. My expectation, however, is that my school system will communicate, explain, and justify any proposed changes to existing grading policy and provide an opportunity for parents to have their questions addressed. I thus ask the board to postpone voting on Revised Policy 2024-20 until all stakeholders have been engaged and the rumors dispelled. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda O'Halloran.
Good evening, School Board Members and District Representatives. My name is Amanda O'Halloran and I am attending the board meeting this evening to also discuss my concerns regarding Revised Policy 2420, which is titled Grading and Progress Reports. I understand that the district is asking the board to approve Revised Policy 2420 at tonight's meeting. I also understand that pursuant to this policy, the district is planning to implement a new grading system in Tacoma Public Schools referred to as standards-based grading. As Kristen explained, standards-based grading, well, it's a significant change to our longstanding grading policies and reportedly will involve eliminating student GPAs and converting to a new system which grades students on a 1 to 4 scale. Well, there's been some mention of the district sending families a survey and conducting listening groups regarding these grading practices. It doesn't appear that the district has really fully informed the constituency or been fully transparent with respect to the intentions behind instituting this new grading policy. And also, it's worth noting that the Revised Policy 2420 is also very vague on this point. It does not mention standard-based grading. However, I have children at Stadium High School and many Stadium High School teachers have shared with my children and other students that they do in fact intend to impose or institute standards-based grading. And so it's disconcerting, I think, to parents. I can speak for myself and other parents I've talked to that this information regarding this very significant policy change is being shared by teachers to students, but we as families aren't receiving the information directly from the district. So instead of approving Revised Policy 2420 this evening, I'm requesting that the board encourage the district to provide parents and families and community members with a fair and open process to learn more about the policy. We want to learn more about what standards-based grading means and what the impact is. I would recommend that the district put information on the website that clearly defines the proposed policy. I would recommend that the district hold meetings to answer apparent questions. And I'd really like to hear a discussion about how adopting this new grading system may impact students at various levels. Because clearly, you know, standard-based grading on a scale of 1 to 4 is going to impact an elementary student more severely than it would impact a high school student. And I think there's just a lot of issues to address and questions about how this is going to impact college admissions, how it's going to impact grade points. And so I'd really ask if you could just create a fair process so we can all learn more. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tamara Jones.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Tamara Jones, she/her pronouns. I'm here also speaking on policy 2024-20. I am a product of Tacoma Public Schools. I am a very proud Voss graduate, class of 95, a few minutes ago. And I am very proud that my daughter, nieces and nephews will all also be products of Tacoma Public Schools. I don't have a position on standard based grading or the actual policy because I simply do not have enough information. I have lots of questions. And my ask to the board tonight, similar to those who went before me, is that we simply slow down. There's a lot of process questions. As a public servant who works in public policy, in the last five years, there's been a great shift of stakeholders' expectations to be involved in decision making. Nothing about us without us. This does not seem to be happening. I was really excited to hear the McCarver community update earlier and hear how extensive the community involvement and stakeholder ring was. Because unfortunately, I have list after a long list of where Tacoma Public Schools hasn't done that. Whether it's from the Stanley Playfields, Bryant Community Involvement in the new building, and the list goes on and on. Lots of questions. My daughter at Stadium participates in college in the classroom. We don't know how this change would translate to grades that the colleges are giving them for this work. This feels like just another thing that they've already spoken. I'm going to skip on things that have already been talked about. One thing that when I started talking to teachers about this, the comments that I received is they've submitted in writing comments. Those were supposed to be publicly posted. They said when they went through the website, none of their comments were posted from any of them. The only comments that seem to be posted are those that are in support of the policy change. That's concerning. So again, there's a question of why now? A core principle in change management is to not make multiple big changes at one time. We know our teachers and students have been through a lot of change in the last three years. Our teachers are stressed to the max. Next year, TPS, we are already rolling out social emotional learning curriculum. It's important coming out of the last three years. It's needed, but this feels like an unnecessary another change that is to something as radical and simple fundamental as our grading system. So again, my ask tonight is simply that we slow down. We allow for more outreach. We get more input from teachers and parents. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Penny Kramer.
Good evening. My name is Penny Kramer and I am speaking to you tonight as the president of the Tacoma Education Association about the revisions to board policy 2420. While many educators have been involved in the revision of this policy, there are a few concerns that may not have been addressed regarding our collective bargaining agreement. In section 41, it states, quote, "The teacher shall have the authority and responsibility to determine grades and other evaluation of students," end quote. There is some concern that the first bullet point under the grading practices headline limits the rights of the teacher to determine the grades because the grading scale will be determined by the district. That bullet point reads, "Based on district adopted standards, the district will establish consistent grading scales at the secondary and elementary levels." First of all, for those of you who don't know, teaching is a performance art. It is not only about being an expert in your content area. It's about building relationships mostly and then learning the skills to know how to deliver the content, how to assess the learning and revising and reteaching over and over again so that each student can access learning at whatever level is needed for their individual's needs and skills. It is one of the most difficult jobs to do well. And as you've heard, we have many educators who are doing a fantastic job of it. Now for our main concern. If the grading scale is the same throughout the district and the weights of the categories of classwork within the class are determined by the district, then the individual teacher does not have the right to determine the grade. Teaching, a performance art, is practiced by skilled, degreed professionals who differentiate for each class and each student that they teach. Because of this, we urge that the implementation of this policy not include setting consistent percentages for the summative and formal assessments within the classroom. Here are a few examples why this is important. In Socratic seminars, participation is a part of the curriculum and the process of learning. In music classes, if a student is not participating in their performance based class, they may be able to demonstrate their individual mastery, but their lack of participation affects the learning and the progress of the ensemble as a whole. In multilingual classes, these are often targeted, focused on targeted support for other class contents and participation is essential for progress. While I see that the word generally has been included in this policy, it's important to leave these decisions to the degreed professionals. I represent the over 2,000 members of the Tacoma Education Association. And on their behalf, I extend an offer to partner with district leadership on the implementation of these grading policies if they are approved so that our educators can continue to meet the needs of students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Green.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Green. I'm coming to the school board as a hired Tacoma Public Schools educator with rights and a parent of two students enrolled in the district with rights. Because my rights as both are being damaged by the decisions of the Tacoma Public Schools and a handful of its employees, and both my livelihood and my character are being attacked, I'm first asking for your help from you leaders before I seek help from the American Civil Liberties Union, legal counsel and the local press, among other organizations. Why such strong language? Because the district has placed a de facto restraining order on me without merit. I have been told not to have contact with my child's teacher. Sounds terrible, right? I must have done something awful, right? Be careful not to instantly criminalize me. Did I break any laws or rules? No. Am I banned from the school's campus? No, but for unjust reasons, I have been told I can no longer observe or volunteer in my child's classroom. This stems from a student conference in the fall. In simple terms, the teacher told me my child was acting up and I attempted to schedule a class observation. The teacher was reluctant to allow this and only allowed it when I got the principal involved. This is a major point. She never wanted a parent in her classroom observing. She never wanted me there. At the classroom observation, I was not pleased because I did not get to observe any instruction. And that was the primary area of concern mentioned in the student conference, that my son was struggling during her instruction. All I got to observe the whole time was students doing one-on-one testing and students doing desk work independently. So I'm left in the room watching my son, the teacher, the adult, other adult giving tests and the kids with a frown on my face part of the time, waiting and expecting some instruction to happen and eventually realizing none would take place. Remember that she never wanted me to observe, so the fact that there was no instruction while I was there could have been intentional. And keep in mind that she decided on the date and time period that I could visit. Why do I make this accusation? Because this teacher has continued to take steps to keep me from seeing her teach my son and be in the classroom without justification. She just never wanted me in there and any real or perceived actions from me occurred after this stance had been taken already by her. After the observation, I attempted to schedule another one, another observation for my child in the instruction environment to see how he and my teacher interacted. Because besides the misbehavior mentioned in the student conference, but in the fall, I was getting more and more reports from my son about the teacher treating him unkindly and unfairly. Was there any merit to that? Maybe, maybe not. But I have the right to see for myself and have the opportunity to attempt to evaluate the interactions between my son and someone that spends several hours a day with him, whether they be a babysitter, family member, coach or teacher. But I've been denied that right. Administration told me I could not visit the classroom anymore. Let me jump to this parallel. Nowadays, if you say you're scared of someone, you can often get away with hurting them. So because this teacher says she's uncomfortable with me, she's leading administration to hurt me. Something needs to be done and you'll be getting this full information very soon.
Okay, finally circling back to Morgan Powell and to Janelle Walter. Okay, that concludes verbal comments for this evening.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and for listening to each other. That was, all right, moving on to item 10 on the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or additions or subtractions from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, the abstentions? Okay, consent agenda passes five to zero. Okay, moving on to item number 11, policy matters. 11.1, second reading of revised policy 2420, grading and progress reports. And I see the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Zeke Edmonds, coming up to the podium. And I know, Zeke, you were listening, so you've heard some of the comments. And I know that we've had some letters to the board that we've shared with you. And we've also had conversations. So I'd love it if you could respond in your presentation to the questions at hand and the confusion. That would be really helpful.
For sure. So we are not going to abandon at the secondary level the traditional grading system that we're used to, As, A-, B+, Bs. It's still a 4.0 GPA scale. I'm wondering if maybe in our communication, the 4.0 GPA scale is part of that. Thinking at elementary, we do a one to four. That's developmentally appropriate for kindergarten through fifth grade. But in sixth grade, we go back to that traditional letter grading system all the way up through high school. We have no interest in taking on the colleges and universities and changing all that. And so in our system for grading, Synergy is our new student information system. Teachers will be able to go in, they still pick their assignments. All the standards are loaded in there, but they're not loaded as in you better do them in this order. It's still that teacher making 90 plus percent of those decisions. So right now, we're working on this assignment. I can name it however I've traditionally named it. I can assign my standards and then I plug in that traditional grade score. So what a kid would see when they log in or a parent or the staff is Zeke Jr. got a C minus on this assignment. And then over the course of the semester, those would add up and calculate into average GPA and letter grade as we've seen historically. So there's no change in that piece. Report cards, transcripts, all would look the same with no interruption between what a kid might receive. Let's say I'm a sophomore, so I've already earned freshman sophomore year worth of credits. I've got about a dozen. Going into next year as a junior, it would accumulate the same way it has historically.
I just have a question. I was wondering, so you mentioned synergy information system. Can you just explain for those listening and who may not know what that means?
Yes, so we've been using eSchool. And another system they may have seen is Schoology. We brought on during COVID to help us with the remote learning. So you can see grades in grade book that the teachers put in before we brought in Schoology and the eSchool system or hack. And that's where we store all our student information. So when they go to look up, how do I contact family? All your contact information's in there, your health information, all your grades and transcripts have all been logged into that. And that's our running record that reports to the state. So we have to have some kind of system like that. In our current one, eSchool, the grade book, just, we've had it for, I think, since 2011. So they hadn't made a lot of updates. It just kind of got dated. So we were using our Schoology system as a live grade book. And we'll switch now over to our new Synergy system. So the thing we use to store all student information and report to the state also has a grade book for teachers to use where they go in and, you know, at secondary, I could go in. There's my first period class, second period class, here's all my students and go in and assign assignments, assessments, quizzes, projects, all teacher discretion.
If we do move forward with adopting a change to a policy, does that also change the resolution attached to that policy? Or would we have to have another vote to change the resolution attached to a policy?
You mean the regulation?
Regulation, resolution?
We'll do one thing at a time.
I'm trying to do my best right here because I was trying to keep track of it all. Because once the parents started talking, I really wanted to understand, was it a resolution? Was it a regulation? What was I missing? And does that change when we change a policy?
So yes, we will update the regulation in alignment. So when you look at some of the bigger bullets that are in the policy for you to review, the regulation gets into the specifics of how those function. And so when it talks about students having opportunity to earn from missing work, we in the regulation unpack that block step.
So in, you know, kind of taking that to the next step, if you're looking at the red line that's before us and you're seeing the policy is really at this level. And so some of the rumors that have been going around are sort of hopping to what the regulation might be, which isn't necessarily accurate. And so I'm saying tonight, passing a policy doesn't put into place a regulation. It actually sets the groundwork for the regulation, which is what is stated here, correct?
Right, so those pieces of superintendent or superintendent designated to then lead that work through cabinet here.
So then who sits on, because I know we have a policy review team, they go through policy,
but they don't go through regulation?
No, so who goes through regulation?
Cabinet produces regulations.
Anyone else?
Nope.
There's a flow chart on how it goes from idea to something written.
Is that on the public facing website so people can find out?
It may be in the policy about how regulations are passed, but not specifically for this, for this regulation. It includes things like sending the regulation for review by principals and like some of these other steps. But it's for all regulations, not like one in particular.
Perfect.
We do have the authority.
That was my question.
Right, and plus I also, I heard Penny Kramer offer rather enthusiastically and that she, you know, be willing to work with the administration to make sure that the issues of the teachers are, you know, reflected. And I guess my suggestion is, unless there's a difference of opinion, but I'm looking at the grading policy, which is what we're adopting to give direction to the superintendent and his team to look at the regulation. And I don't see anything in here that is troubling in terms of changing any of the specifics that were mentioned in the comments. So I'm, I'm feeling comfortable doing the policy, but I do think that if the regulation, you know, we could always ask for the regulation to come back to the board, you know, for a look. So anyway, I'm just thinking at this point, it's really at the regulation level where it gets to that minutia piece.
Correct. Will that, will we be able to request, like, at a public meeting to hear about the regulation? I do read them on my own, but I am not even in the 2000s yet. I'm still in the 1000s, okay? And I skipped around to 6,000 because I learned that I need to know that. So for me, I think I'd like to hear back on the regulation publicly when it does go through. If that is a possibility, legal counsel, Zeke, if you guys could do that.
Certainly a possibility to request out of staff, yeah.
Okay.
How are you guys feeling about that?
I would move to adopt item 11.1.
Hang on, where? I'm asking about questions for us.
We've got some questions.
Yep, that's what I'm asking.
The issue of bringing back the regulation to us and minutia. Generally, our roles and everyone in the community probably knows this, but not everyone knows this is we set vision and policy, but we don't get into weeds on detail. And that is the job of superintendent and all the staff to do, right? But I'm, and backing this up a little bit more, maybe we can expound on this a little bit more. The reason we brought this up as a whole issue around grading is that there's not the current system of grading that's been going on in the world since university was created by Fatima in thousands of years ago. Different ways of grading, but not always fair, let's just say. And we know that there's bias and there's institutional racism and institutional biases in grading has been going on for a long time.
Yep.
We're trying to get away from that and improve our system there. I have heard the parents that spoke today, the educators that spoke today. I've been, we've been hearing from them, you know, through our contacts online and everything. Very recently, more than prior. So I'm hearing this concern around not enough time. Their voice, they feel like their voice hasn't been. So I'm hearing this concern around not enough time, their voice, they feel like their voice hasn't been heard. We've given opportunity to the community to partake. 2,000 people surveyed, doesn't sound like a big number compared to what our district is. I don't know the basis or the facts around this comment that was given around negative feedback not being printed on the website. I don't know how to account for that, nor if it's true or not. So but I hear the concerns of folks, but I want to make sure everyone understands why we're trying to find a better way and a better system to do this. And I hope you've reassured some folks in the community around the grades and the numbers versus the letters and how that corresponds to higher people that want to choose to go to collegiate level work and how that won't be impacted. So I just don't want us to think about us doing the minutia work up here. But I also want to be public and to be, nobody's ever going to be comfortable, completely comfortable everywhere at all times when we try to make improvements and change. So I'm not sure what to, how to do this right now. I'm not sure if it's time to go ahead and have the vote now, wherever, however it goes, and then later have more information, more involvement from teachers, the union, parents, students, as the details get ironed out. Because there are intentionally some general language in this, right, around the word that's even in here. Therefore, do not generally include, generally include, but there's a lot of latitude there. I know there's similar language like that. So I would like to hear from.
And I want to just clarify what I meant. I didn't mean bring back the regulation to us for a vote, because that isn't something we vote on. But it, that you would bring it back to explain it, not to vote on it. So I want to be crystal clear about that. So anyway, so, but we, so, okay.
One more thing. So the other idea we could have is to postpone this for a couple of weeks, or we vote now. I'd like to hear from all of us.
I think that you kind of spoke to the heart of the reason why it was being adopted for change is to get away from, we passed a policy, policy 1600. It's an anti-racism policy, and in grading practices, there are power and dynamic within our school, in our district, in every school in the nation, and even across the world, where there is a power imbalance between students and their teachers, and there's someone who holds your life in their hands with their grades. And their grade will dictate who you become and where you will go and where you're allowed to go. And we touched on that when we passed that anti-racism policy. And you touched on it, the way you said it really clarified for me, because I was getting into the weave, like you said, and that's not what we do. Our job is to guide the district in the right direction. And I really appreciate the way you worded it, and it helped me understand and remember why we wanted to look at this policy. And it's general language, but this general language aligns with our anti-racism policy and our civility and kindness to students policies. And so I feel like we should hear from everybody, but I really appreciate that you brought up the heart of why we looked at this policy.
Can I expand on that to your point? We also were looking at mental health.
Yep.
Like this tied to a board goal in August of last year. So we have been talking about this for well over a year, even before, because we were talking about the modifications we made in spring of 2020.
Right.
And that actually was the first time we started as a board, talk, at least in my involvement, we started talking about the needs to upgrade our policy, our grading policy, because we knew the policy implements or impacts the implementation and practice. And so when we set this, the goal around mental health, like, we were really focused on how does our grading policy impact the mental health of our students? And I sometimes feel it's so confusing to be told how we're not transparent, that we don't ever communicate. What I cannot imagine how many additional ways besides going and knocking on someone's door and saying, hey, this is what we're doing. We actively are trying to communicate and engage on a genuine level to do things that decrease the barriers and the systematic racism, to increase equitable practices. And I just, like, on a personal level, feel really frustrated when we're told that we're not doing our job, that we're being accused of not being transparent, that we're not actually engaging the community. Because just, there are so many different ways that we do work and continue to improve how. Because we have, like, we didn't up until almost three years ago, there was no way to engage with policy on the website. There is now. And if that's not communicated, we say it almost every single board meeting. We talk about, every time we talk about a policy, this is where you can find it. And I think the thing that we've, I feel we've talked so deeply about in terms of mental health is how do students get impacted by homework, by grading, by the way that they're treated in classrooms? And this is one of those steps for us that we have, I believe, in a genuine, authentic way, been working towards something that is less harmful, that actually meets a student where they're at, and provides those metrics and the framework to do the kind of work that we are trying to do through our policy and through our governance.
Thank you, Lisa. And in addition to that, so many of you may not know that when we were talking about mental health, we actually, all of us went out and met with students in classrooms for middle schools and high schools with the administration. And Zeke was at almost all of those meetings, and Lisa was too, Lisa Nolan. And listening to kids, students, about what was stressful about grading and what they'd like to see differently about how their teachers were treating them and their work. And what's reflected in here is exactly what we heard back from the kids. I mean, they were the ones saying, we want to make these changes. So it is confusing when then we hear from parents who don't understand, but I understand that it's just because we maybe in some way haven't communicated what those result might be. But that's because you haven't written the regulations yet, so we don't have anything to communicate. What we're doing today is passing a policy that's going to give you a new framework to look at how to pull those regulations together. So.
Madam President, it might be helpful for Assistant Superintendent Edmund to remind us of the opportunities that were available in addition to the survey, the listening sessions. Every, when I was at, there was at least one educator in the room. But invitations, participation, surveys that went out multiple times. And unfortunately, we're not able to make people participate in a survey. As far as opportunities, if you can just, and on March 9th, you shared publicly, on May 18th, you shared publicly.
We had a whole study session on.
Right.
So, yes, would you mind giving us, and then I want to make sure that Director, Vice President Stroger has a moment to say something. He's like, nope, I'm done. Okay, so.
Yeah, so we started with our first small teacher group in December. Cabinet was looking at grade data through last spring and this fall. And in part two, kind of monitoring what's happening as we come out of COVID and kind of realign. And then in January, we started the listening sessions with board members at different schools. We did most of the high schools, half the middle schools. We also made it into three elementary schools to hear from even down to third graders. So that was great. We then asked each principal to send us two teacher names. We could not host every teacher, but we wanted to engage them, so we had two different sessions. And we kind of did a phase one and phase two. And in phase one, it was their input. They also had a chance to hear what kids wrote. So as you saw, you mentioned the staff members, we took notes during those student listening sessions, so they could hear from students as well. And we did our first survey out to all staff, which included teachers as well as administrators. Based on that, we took kind of the big ideas and themes and then drafted up our second survey. And in the themes that you saw, those are what also went out into the family survey and back out to staff. We did a second listening session as we got those results. We've been trying to do our best to publish all those on the site, both the data from the survey as well as the quotes. Part of the reason we did not put all quotes on there is on the family side, I did not communicate. So in the first round, I had said in the survey, we will be sharing these. And the second round, I did not. So, and I appreciated people's transparency, but it probably wasn't something I should post. So we didn't get all those on there, except for the ones where we did communicate, we will be sharing these publicly, just to be fair to the participants, since it was anonymous. And then that second round, a teacher piece, really digging into, kind of talking about the weeds or that grandeur level, what does it look like if a kid is going to retake? And we're not here to let every kid retake every single assignment over, like, there has to be limits. There is a reality to the school year, there's a reality to the workload. So those were kind of those thematic buckets that we started getting more feedback on. So what would be realistic? What does it look like to do this within a week or within 10 days? So getting into some of those metrics. So that's the content we pulled back out, which helped us draft some of this general language and then start drafting what might show up in a regulation. But we heard from kids, you know, we've got a lot of athletes out there, people working. We heard a lot from the kids about life after high school. And so part of that GPA, it's NCAA approved, right? Like, we're just not looking to change that.
Okay, so any other questions or thoughts before we proceed to actually do what you came up to the podium to start?
I'm on your time.
Along that line, if you just, on how the parents, their input was brought in through emails or texts? How were they, how were parents or guardians reached?
Yeah, so we also have our superintendent breakfast, so we did two sessions. There was a fall one and a spring-ish one. So we did listening sessions in those as well for the families that were present. And then in the survey, the communication office directly sent that message out to families. So we saw a pretty immediate turnaround for a lot of folks, and then we left it open for several weeks, so folks had time. We've done updates on our public site under the curriculum instruction. We've done a lot of updates on our hub and internal staff. Principals also had listening sessions, they've had two. Instructional coaches have had two at every level. So we've, same thing, kind of phase one, big ideas, phase two, unpack the big ideas.
All right. So do you want to continue with the, reading the item so that we can start?
I think, Malik, that's your.
No, no, not the resume. You have to do the. Assistant Superintendent.
The Assistant Superintendent, on behalf of General Counsel and Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the revised proposal, policy 2420.
I move to adopt item 11.1.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The abstentions? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, everyone, and we will be. Okay. Now, hang on a second. So item 12 is a financial report. District's next quarterly financial report is planned for August 24th, 2023. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot com schools dot org backslash departments backslash business and finance. 13, curriculum and instruction, 13.1, approval of contract number TSD dash 23 dash 060 between Calo and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2024.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 23 dash 060 between Calo and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2024, funding source, Student Services. I move to adopt item 13.1.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. 13.2, approval to adopt and purchase EduCurious curriculum materials, grades six through eight for the 2023, 24 through 2030, 31 school years.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the adoption, purchase, and delivery of grades six through eight EduCurious Social Studies curricula materials before the opening of the 2023, 24 school year in the amount of $515,400, including sales tax, shipping, funding source, curriculum instruction, basic ed funds.
I move to adopt item 13.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? I just want to say it was exciting to hear the, how well it worked in the classroom. So that's.
I do, I want to thank the educators that did come and share again, like, tonight and then last time. Thank you, thank you for helping us.
Right, understand.
Learn through you.
Yep, you guys, a lot of time spent on this, and the fact that you love it gives us great hope. So thank you. All right, and no other comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. All right, business matters is item number 14, 14.1, approval of the guaranteed maximum price, GMP Amendment Four to the contract between Tacoma School Department District Number 10 and Abner Construction for Phase Two of the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle Project.
So we, we had a small mistake that we need to just correct, amend on 14.1.
Okay.
The amount listed there, 17 million, 671,496, that's actually the total contract and not the GMP that we're approving. That GMP is actually 180,000.
Oh.
Going down to 653. So the Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the GMP Amendment Number Four, which states that the guaranteed maximum price for purchasing and installation completion of access control, intrusion detection, intercom upgrades, and authorizes the superintendent or designee to said GMP Number Four in the amount of $180,653, excluding sales tax.
Yeah, if I could add one thing, in the agenda item for this item, they do have that 18653 noted correctly and properly contextualizing it with the 17.4 being the total amount. So the actual item itself has the accurate.
Yep. So before we move it and second it, Tracy, I just want to make sure that this is reflected in the minutes and that we get a corrected version of the, of the actual agenda, so that it's all related for future history. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any comments or questions for Morris on this one? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes five zero. 14.2, approval to purchase playground equipment and fencing at Stanley Elementary School from Game Time Care of Greater Western Recreation.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent and or designee to expend $454,814, excluding sales tax, for playground equipment and fencing at Stanley Elementary, funding source, capital, project bonds.
I move to adopt item 14.2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Morris. Appreciate you coming. Item number 15, 15.1, adoption of Resolution 2124, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Tacoma School District Number 10 to support the prevention of gun violence.
Yes, the District General Counsel recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 2124 in support of the prevention of gun violence in our community and country.
I move to adopt item 13.1.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? I would just like to say that I want to thank the General Counsel and his entire team, as well as everyone up on this dais for all of the work that you guys have put in, that we have put in over the years, but especially recently, to work with our community partners and really put, put out a statement about gun violence in our community, because we have lost way too many of our youth to gun violence this year. So thank you. All right, anyone else have a comment?
I think it's important to note that this piece of paper isn't going to change anything. So the idea here is that we continue to engage with our community partners, which I know we're going to do, to all take a stand, to understand the importance of preventing this from happening. I can tell you that the summertime is, is near and it's going to be hot. So I can tell you that the school district is doing our part, and we're doing a little bit more. Our community partners are stepping up, and they're going to continue to step up. But just know that just because we pass this resolution doesn't mean things are going to immediately stop. There's still tons of work to do, more work ahead of us than behind us. But this is a first step in making sure we keep our young people safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep, Director Liam?
As most people know, I mean, this is a public health emergency, and it is the most common reason children die, is gun violence. So it's, it's the most common reason in America for death of kids. And for that reason, and it's important that we stand with our other partners in the whole community to work on this, on this terrible problem.
And also, so folks know, that is one of the reasons we are doing the. And also, so folks know, that is one of the reasons we are doing the late nights for summer, from Monday through Friday, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 12 different locations, six of them middle school, six of them high school, in every community around our, of our, in, within our district, for Tacoma Public School students to come and find a free space to come where it's, you know, relaxed and it's off the streets and they have available ability to just have some quiet time, some chill time, or maybe play some basketball. And that is, pardon me?
And dinner.
And dinner. Forgot about the dinner. Yeah, there's food. And it's, so keep, keep looking at our website and other places to find out more about the details of where that is. But again, it's only open to Tacoma Public School students. You will need your student, student ID to get in. But it is because we want to keep you safe. And so parents, you know, you know, you have that as a, as an option for your middle schoolers and high schoolers. So, and this resolution is just the beginning of the work that we're all going to do with our community to, to help change the trajectory of violence in our, in our community. Right, all those in favor? Oh, nope, nope, nope. It's resolution.
You're on it. You're on top of it. So we'll do a roll call vote. President Bob Bright, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Shroger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCullough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Leon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, we're on to board comments. Who wants to go first? I know we have a long night.
I can do it. All right, so, um, as many people know, I'm the newest person to the board, very new. But not so much anymore. You don't get to say that anymore. I am new because you all have been here longer than me, which makes me the new hot commodity. So what I did when I got here on board, I really joined the board to understand the way students were treated in school because that was where I was as a community partner. I would only hear about the student experiences. So I spent a lot of time diving into the student policies, Policy 3000. I learned a lot about what students can do, what they can't do, all that kind of cool stuff. But I've been learning about other policies because of my committee assignment. I am the Early Learning Director rep and today we had our Head Start Federal Review. They asked me a lot of questions. These are national people talking about what do we do as a board and how do I communicate with you all? Yeah, they told me that. Like, how are you talking to them? I'm like, I do talk to them. In what way? And then I tell them about quorum and all the rules and regulations, like how and when we can communicate. That was really interesting because, again, like I said, I'm new. So it's like being grilled on, do you know the laws on how to be a school board director? And I passed. But that's not the thing that we taught.
Of course you did.
Fingers crossed. So our federal Head Start review, they were really keen on our, our program. They loved our parents, the ones who come here to present to us. They, our policy council parents were amazing. Our Head Start teachers have been meeting with them the past week and they were impressed with our teachers, our staff, our assistant teachers, even like our janitorial staff and the food services at Willard. They were like, this place is amazing. If I had a kid, I would have a kid in Tacoma so I could be a Head Start here. So that was really nice to hear. But then also, I was thinking about our community as a whole. I talked about it at our last board meeting. I talked about places where people can find information in community. Yes, on our landing page, our teen nights are right there posted. But then also at all of the Metro Park sites, they've been having these co-create to recreate. And I think they say recreate because it's like a rec center, but it's recreate. And you go to these events and you learn about what's happening in your neighborhood within the boundaries of their specific like community site. They feed you dinner. My kids were there. They were doing their thing tonight. But also, there's a lot of people from the community who just pour in. They come for the free dinner and they learn about the services in their community. And I really think, like what we do here at this dais, we don't get into the weeds. But there are places in the community in Tacoma that are really getting into the weeds of who we are and what we do. And so that was really cool that I got a report back already from one of the parents. They're like, did you know all these things are happening? I'm like, yes, I told you to go last month. And then lastly, just talking about like who this community is and where we come from. I really appreciated learning about Dr. Edna Travis, Dr. Edna Travis, and the work that she's done in community. I am a pillar, a descendant of Pillars of the Hilltop Community. My grandfather ran churches in that neighborhood all of my childhood. My father was a gang member who was saved by a church in the Hilltop Community because somebody dared to go into that violent neighborhood and say, I care about you, I will feed you, and you don't have to make bad decisions. Hearing her story in parallel of mine in so many ways and the, the legacy of impact. I don't lean one way or another in anything, but just understanding who black people are and who and where we come from, I think is really important when we have these conversations about who a person is. Because the pillars of our community, we come from slavery and the church was the place that fed us, that clothed us, and that told us that we were okay and that we didn't have to be these misfits of society, that Jim Crow laws and so many laws and so many people made us feel. And so I feel that we have to roll back sometimes and imagine who we would have been in 1958 sometimes, when we reflect on people. So I'm taking, taking deep reflection on what we're going to do and who we're going to be, but also understanding exactly who I am and who I'm going to be. So thank y'all for giving me a platform.
Always. All right, anyone else?
Sure, I had, I mean, there's, I don't know, there was a lot of really great events. We had the TPS Rainiers Night, which was really fun. And I have lost count on how many schools participated and were there, but it was, I thought 20 or so. I'm looking at Deputy Superintendent. I just remember the scroll on the screen, like there was a school after school. And it was really, I'm grateful that it happened this year on a non-school board meeting night, whereas in the past, that has not, we have been here while that has gone on. So it was really fun to see that. And what I didn't realize was that it was also raising funds for Beyond the Bell. Correct? Did I get that right? It is Beyond the Bell.
I think we're broadly extracurriculars, but yeah.
But yes, but not for us, but for the program. And that ticket sales, $5 of each ticket that was sold went to that. And I was told, I thought by Catherine McCarthy, that we raised over $2,000. Plus, there was the auction of the jersey that was designed by one of our students.
Correct.
I'm looking, I'm looking at Vice President because we sat together. But I just like, there was pieces of that particular night that I didn't realize were happening or were part of it until we were there. So that was, that was really exciting. And just to see so many families and staff were there, it was really, really fun. And then I had attended, so Silas had their honor cord ceremony and then a couple, it might have been five days later or the same week, I don't even know. They also had their, they call it the senior awards ceremony, but they were giving awards also to community members. And because of COVID, there were awards that of people who had contributed specifically to Silas and/or previously Wilson, because some of the folks were honored prior to the name change. And so it was really amazing. Xavier Cooper was one of those individuals who was the, the community member that helped initiate the change of Silas. There was a retired transportation TPS employee that was just hilarious and wonderful. And just, there were a number of different people on top of students who were honored for different scholarships and awards that they had received. So just seeing all of that just in one space was really meaningful as we have already started our graduations. And next week is the marathon week of that. And then I just wanted to say, and of course, you know, mostly it's just our wonderful staff predominantly in the audience now. I wanted to talk about pride and talk about it in two different ways. So Pride Month, often every Pride Month, there are people that, you know, have feelings about why it shouldn't exist or what's the point, or often even far more bigoted opinions about it. And I just want to say, as someone for, in 12, at least 12 years, that have been working with staff directly, with families directly on the inclusion and safety and acceptance of LGBTQ students regardless of their age. On June 1st, when the district's Facebook page changed their profile picture to include the progressive pride flag and the history behind that is that it includes, to represent LGBTQIA people of color as well, was extraordinarily meaningful. And I remember buying one of the first TPS pride shirts over five years ago. And I learned from the Director of Whole Child, Laura Allen, that we have sold, the district over a number of years has sold over 10,000 of those T-shirts and sweatshirts. Now, like six of them are in my house, but I just, you know. But that, and, and at the, on the Rainiers Pride, the Rainiers Game Night, I saw dozens of people wearing TPS pride T-shirts. And I go out in the community and I see a number of people, I go in buildings and I see people wear them. We were at a groundbreaking yesterday and today and people are wearing that. As, yes, as a, as a, as a reminder, right? As, as a direct reminder and a symbol of you are, you are welcome and belonged. And during a time when the LGBTQ community is on the number one list of domestic terrorism right now for the Department of Homeland Security.
Against people?
No. The threat of domestic terrorism to LGBTQ people and the community is the number one threat. We, and, and that, that is like so incomprehensible. The, the level of violence, the pride celebrations are grappling with threats of severe violence. And there is a point where we, we have to as a community, and I know we are getting, we are better at that, at stopping that language and that those sentiments on the onset. And I will say, on our Facebook page, on the district Facebook page, it had a number of vile, awful comments. And community members came in and said, no, this is unacceptable, not here. And I just, as, as challenging as this month is in terms of the rhetoric around LGBTQ people and trans people have continued to reach epidemic levels of threats of violence, at the same time, we are a district and we are a school board that says, you belong, you are valued, and we stand alongside you. And I just want to say how meaningful that is to me, to my family and to so many staff and family members and students who are among the LGBTQ community.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate you. Anybody on this side wanting to share? Vice President Shroger?
Yeah, I did a couple, couple things since the last board meeting. We did the, on June 1st, we had the TPS retirement celebration. We had some, one of our staff members were present and they had been working for 42 years, OGA. 42 years in, in education, long time, but a beautiful demonstration of commitment to making young people's lives better. Everybody who was in that room celebrating their retirement definitely were committed to young people and we're glad that they chose Tacoma Schools to, to do their work. To TPS Night at the Rainiers, I hadn't been to a Rainiers game in, I don't know how long, but this was an opportunity to take my kids to their first game. And, you know, kids are kids. So they got to experience it. They got some food, some chips and a hat, and that's all that they needed. Yeah, that was exciting. I got to do college familiars at Jenny Reed, which is kind of like Hogwarts, where you get separated by houses and then you got a fifth grade leader leading you through activities. That's, that's how, that's how Ms. Sloan broke it down to me. I didn't make that up. But fifth grade students are, are the leaders of this, of this for, for their younger peers. And man, it's like, I guess this is, I don't know, this obviously isn't the first time they did it this year. But it was, I heard multiple teachers say, this is the best that it's been. Like folks were, students were falling in line. One kid pulled me to the side and said, hey, I, I got this college on my name tag. Does that mean I have to go there? And I was like, I, I don't know. Do you have to? No, I'm kidding. But he was, he was excited to participate and at least show me around and how things went down. So that was exciting to participate in some of those circles. What else? I took so many notes here. This is wild. Okay. I was able to kick off our graduations with Willie Stewart Academy. It was this week, I don't remember which day. Tuesday, but we had 44 graduates. That's the most ever.
Yay, Willie Stewart.
I've got some history with Willie Stewart, back when it was the re-engagement center in 2014. And just to see the growth from 1818 to where we currently stand at Ninth and Broadway, like the students really, I don't think I'd be wrong to say that the environment in which they were in contributed to the number of graduate, graduates that we had this year. Just like a, a place to call their own anyway. So it was really exciting to see families fill up that Mount Home Auditorium. I'm telling you, if we keep going at this rate, we're not going to be able to do it there. I mean, it was, it was packed, which is just a beautiful sight to see. And finally, I will just share, something happened at Lincoln yesterday. I mean, the Aves were everywhere tonight, so I guess I'll talk about this. We broke ground at the, for the Lincoln Ball Field Project. Shout out to the voters for sure for the $535 million bond that was passed in 2020, allowing us to do this. Something that's very well deserved by our Lincoln athletes. I can tell you that our baseball team, back when I was at Lincoln, went out to the mud. And if it was raining too hard, then there was no practice, there was no game. Our fast, same with our fast pitch team, our tennis team, which my wife played tennis, would get on the bus and go to Stewart Heights and practice. So it's always a travel. But to be able to have the level of success that these student athletes have without their own home turf is, is phenomenal. So I'm extremely excited to see what happens in Abe Land, Spring of 2024, when folks start to get, get to use these fields. So really exciting. And that's the end of my report.
Well, speaking of groundbreaking, Director Keating and I were at Reed Elementary today for the groundbreaking of the new playfield, which, playground area, you know. And it's part of the Metro Parks, everyone living 10, within 10 minutes of walking to a park project. I know probably has a better name than that, but that's the functional project. And so Reed Elementary, Stafford Elementary is the next place on the list. But, but Reed, we got, fifth graders got the shovels out today and we got to shovel some dirt. And hopefully, within, you know, before school starts, there will be a beautiful new park there. Joint project with Metro Parks Tacoma and the land, the land trust, the national, the land, yeah, Washington Land Trust. So.
I think it's U.
I think it's the Washington.
I'm just trying to picture the T-shirt.
Yeah, me too. But anyway, so that was a fun event. And then so that's, and also I did my tutoring again this week at Wainwright Intermediate with the four fifth grader girls who are doing a project on child, preventing child trafficking. And it has been, I think it's my fourth time sitting down with them. And I'm just so relieved because they're, 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 you know, really have gotten it pulled together. I thought when the first couple of times, I was not optimistic that this was going to come out to fruition. But they have pulled it together in the end and the presentation's all next week and they're, you know, for their parents. And I'm going to go Tuesday night and get to meet their parents and, and congratulate them on the finished project. So that has been a fun experience, a little, I do have a deep, deep respect for the teachers. It's, you know, when you don't, when you're not a teacher every day, you don't realize how challenging it can be to corral all these kids and their different perspectives and it's a lot. Anyway, so yay to the teachers. So we are ready to move on to item number seven. Did you have something you wanted? He'd already said no. Item number 17, Announcement of our Regular Board Meetings Minutes. The meetings, June 22nd will be our next meeting, right here at 6:00 PM. And then we have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So June 13th will be the, I'm sorry, July 13th will be the one in July and August 24th will be the business meeting at that point. So I am going to officially adjourn this meeting and then this group up here, five of us, will be adjourning into an executive session. So for this meeting is now adjourned.